Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, May 5th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for May 5th, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log in to GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
Thank you, and City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First on the agenda, we have swearing-in of Mayor Pro Tem Danny Spring.
You're right there. Please raise your right hand. I, Danny Spring, do solemnly swear. I, Danny Spring, do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Iowa. And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability. And that I will faithfully and partially, to the best of my ability. Discharge all the duties of the office of Mayor Pro Tem as now or hereafter required by law. Discharge all the duties of the Mayor Pro Tem as now or hereafter required by law. Congratulations. Thank you.
Our presentation this evening is La Metro Murdoch Receives Women's Leadership Network Women of Achievement Award.
I don't have to convince anybody that she gets this award, right? I'm Cory Burbach. I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I had the pleasure of writing the nomination for La Metro, and so I wanted to share a little bit of that nomination with you tonight. So, a couple weeks ago, La Metro was nominated and took home the award in the Women Leadership, Women of Achievement category of Up and Coming Leader. And here's how they described that category. "This leader is a young leader who is in the early stages of their leadership journey and is demonstrating dynamic leadership ability within her organization or her community." And I want to tell you all the things in here because there's so many good things to tell you about her, but I'm going to read just a couple lines. "In 2024, La Metro interviewed for an advancement position in the city. She walked into that room and told us that while it pained her to consider stepping away from being the first call families made when they were in need in her role in housing, she was ready and excited to fix the systems that were impacting them, making a bigger influence in our community." And then if I can close, here's, when I was trying to wrap up, how do I put this all into one neat little paragraph to meet the word limits of this nomination for La Metro? I said, "It is clear that she is open to expanding her connections in her community in order to expand her understanding and impact. She is undeniably worthy of this award. She isn't afraid to lead with her own curiosity and lean into uncomfortable conversations that lead those of us who have had the opportunity to have them with her better off. Not only is she an up-and-coming leader in Dubuque, but she is the type of leader that I think we need right now." So please help me to congratulate La Metro Murdoch.
Thank you so much. It is just an honor to receive this award and to be presented on today before you guys. Like I said before, I honestly love what I do. I do not go to work. I'm literally unemployed because I enjoy what I do, and the impact that I get to see in people's lives is just breathtaking. But I don't do that for recognition, you know? So this is kind of awkward. I don't do that just to be seen. I do that because it's a need in our community. So, thank you so much.
We know you don't do it, to be seen, but we see you, and we're very proud of you. So, thank you very much for the work that you do. This is truly deserving. So, congratulations once again.
Move on to proclamations. Our first proclamation is Building Safety Month.
Okay. We have a number of proclamations to celebrate tonight, so excited to do that. I believe Cory Velasquez is here to accept this proclamation this evening. So Cory, if you want to say a few words before I read the proclamation, feel free.
Good evening. My name is Cory Velasquez. I'm a lifelong Dubuque resident and a member of the Building Code Advisory and Appeal Board. On behalf of the board, I am honored to accept the Building Safety Month proclamation. We appreciate your ongoing support and commitment to building safety in Dubuque. Building codes and enforcement don't always get a lot of attention, but they're here to keep people safe and properties safe. Many people in the course of design, construction, and operation of buildings are responsible for ensuring they are safe for occupants. Thank you for recognizing their contributions.
Well Cory, thank you for being here, not just to accept this proclamation, but for your service on the commission. We are on the board. We really appreciate it. You and all the other professionals that do help keep everyone safe here in Dubuque. So, thank you for that. You're welcome. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the City of Dubuque is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, including housing and building inspectors, fire marshals, architects, engineers, builders, HVAC installers, electricians, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe design, construction, and occupation of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated to continually expanding their knowledge to provide guidance and the implementation of relevant and quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as building deterioration and decay, snowstorms, tornadoes, wind damage, fires, and floods. And whereas Building Safety Month reminds the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local inspectors and code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Game On, the theme of Building Safety Month 2025, encourages us all to get involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local building, engineering, planning, and fire departments in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Building Safety Month. Come on up Cory.
Our second proclamation is Mental Health Month.
Okay. Vicki Gassman and Brenna Bergart are here to join us today.
Good evening, and thank you very much for having us, and thank you for your continued support every year of Mental Health Awareness Month in our community. Mental Health America is a national organization that has been around since 1909, and our local Dubuque chapter since 1957. We're also the last one left in the state of Iowa. We are volunteer-run and work to increase awareness and reduce stigma against mental health. We do this through outreach, education, trainings, scholarships, and advocacy, like we are doing here tonight. Our national theme this year, as noted in the proclamation, is Turn Awareness Into Action, and it refers to taking the passive support and giving it real support to create an impact. This can look like starting a culture of mental health education and awareness at the workplace, addressing problems when you see them, educating yourself or others on mental wellness, attend mental wellness activities, or, like myself, keep an active list of resources to give those in need when they are ready. Or the simplest but most difficult option, listening to other people. Turn your passive support into active listening and understanding, which can be difficult when we all have such busy lives, but can be the best way to turn awareness into action. To wrap up, I would like to thank all of you here for doing this every year without even realizing. Every time all of you here attend a community event that reduces stigma and increases education and acceptance, you show your active support for mental health and acceptance, and you're turning awareness into action. Your efforts not quite noticed, and they are appreciated. We would like to invite you to our Mental Health Americas Dinner and Silent Auction on May 22nd, where we bring our community together to support and fundraise for our continued efforts in mental health advocacy. Thank you for your continued support every year for the Declaration of Mental Health Awareness Month, and for your advocacy against the stigma and for education all year round. Thank you.
Thank you for being here to share that message. I didn't realize you were the only chapter left in Iowa. That was news to me. So, thank you for the work that you do in our community. We're glad to have you here. So, thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas for over 60 years, Mental Health America has brought together mental health providers, consumers, family members, advocates, and concerned residents to serve as an effective voice for mental health in this area. And whereas maintaining good mental health is vital to overall health and well-being, and mental health conditions are common, manageable, and treatable. And whereas one in five people will experience a mental health condition in any given year, and about half of Americans will meet the criteria for a diagnosable mental health condition at some point in their lives, with symptoms often beginning by age 14. And whereas mental health challenges affect people of all ages, backgrounds, and communities, and early intervention and access to care can save lives and improve outcomes. And whereas seeking help for mental health concerns is an act of strength, and increasing awareness about mental health can reduce stigma, improve understanding, and connect individuals to the resources they need. And whereas the theme for Mental Health Month 2025, Turn Awareness Into Action, highlights the need to move beyond awareness and take meaningful steps toward improving mental health in our communities. And whereas May is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, combat stigma, and promote mental health resources. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Mental Health Month in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and call upon the residents, government agencies, educational institutions, businesses, and schools in the Dubuque area to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health challenges, challenge, excuse me, understanding of mental health, challenge stigmas surrounding mental health, seek help for themselves, and to create supportive environments for others. All right. Janice Esser is here with us today.
I'm Janice Esser, the Historic Preservation Commission Chairperson. We'd like to thank you for your recognition of Preservation Month. It's also Architecture Day's week, which Chris Olson will speak a little bit about.
I'm Chris Happ Olson. I'm a staff person to the Historic Preservation Commission, and we're happy to be able to celebrate Preservation Month and Architecture Week with you. Tomorrow, we'll have our awards ceremony. We'll be celebrating five different awards for 1199 Central, the old Prescott School, which was the third ward school, our first school in Dubuque. Lloyd Singletary is honored for that work. And then 1047, 1049 Bluff Street with Josh Jansen and RRS Construction, completing that and turning that building into four quality affordable homes, or quality homes in Dubuque. And we have the Cathedral, the roughly St. Raphael's Cathedral restoration, where they have gone through the whole campus in both the rectory, the campus, and the cathedral, which just recently reopened. So we're celebrating the archdiocese and the crew that took that on. The second church that we have is the First Congregational Church of Dubuque, where that church was threatened, probably with survival for the structural deficiencies there, and the congregation really took on a great restoration, did a whole bunch of things in addition to being able to save that north wall of the church. And the last would be for Dwayne Haggerty, a posthumous award for his work in preservation over the last 15 years in Dubuque when he was living here and in Chicago. So, we invite you to come out to the cathedral tomorrow between about 6:00 and 7:30 and celebrate with us.
Well, thank you both for being here. You do incredibly important work. You've helped preserve what makes Dubuque Dubuque in a lot of ways. So, thank you very much for the work that you do and making sure that everybody knows about it and has a chance to celebrate that too, as you said this week. So, thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for telling a more complete story of our community, fostering local pride, revitalizing neighborhoods, managing growth, creating sustainable communities, and enhancing livability. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. And whereas the city honors preservation efforts annually through the Historic Preservation Commission's Ken Kringle Awards in partnership with the Dubuque County Historic Preservation Commission and Dubuque Main Street, taking place tomorrow, May 6th, at St. Raphael's Cathedral at 6:00 PM. And whereas Preservation Month, celebrating the theme "The Power of Place," and sponsored by the City of Dubuque Historic Preservation Commission, is an opportunity for the community to celebrate the people preserving our history that is significant to our community's past and future. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Preservation Month in the City of Dubuque, calling upon Dubuqueers to join others across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance.
Our fourth proclamation is Neighborhood Association's Recognition.
All right. Thomas Lynn, Matthew Phelps, and Chris Harrison are here, I believe, to accept this proclamation. Please, if you'd like to say a few words before we read the proclamation.
My name is Tom Lynn. I'm the president of the Tomahawk Drive Association. We're a new association, started about six months ago, just off of Rockdale. I just wanted to say thank you for being able to, you know, help us get through the process. Temwah's been fantastic, so.
It's great. Thank you.
My name is Matthew Phelps. I am the president of the Cleveland Park Neighborhood Association. We've been around for about a year and a half now. Thanks to city funding, we've been able to have several events that, as far as I've been here, not too long, but as far as I've been part of a neighborhood, hasn't happened. And neighbors are very pleased to get out, to get to know one another, and work together to build communities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Chris Harrison. Happy to be here tonight to represent the Fennel and Hill Neighborhood Association. If to say some words tonight, it'd just be to echo a considerable amount of thanks. About three years ago, we started this process that really equates to rebooting a neighborhood association that had been in place probably a decade prior. The conversation process started when I met Anderson Sancy and Temwah Fury. It's been a wonderful connection, even a friendship, you know, that's continued up until now, and all the resources and energy and ideas they've given us to, you know, go back to our neighborhood and achieve some of the mission statement that we had that in part includes to create a sense of community, and also to, you know, increase the enjoyment in the neighborhood through beautification projects. That first part, I would like to just say that the idea of building the sense of community, which really has to be at the root of everything that we're doing, is made possible by the generous funding that we've received from the city. This summer, we will recognize our third annual block party, and I can tell you, as I stand here, I've had a lot of indications from our neighbors about just how happy and pleased and thankful they are to be able to just simply get out and meet one another and extend some camaraderie in the neighborhood. So, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Well, thank you all for being here, and thank you for serving in the roles that you serve in. You know, I have to say, one of my favorite things of the last few years has been the way that the neighborhood associations have just blossomed all over Dubuque. And Anderson and Temwah in the Office of Shared Prosperity have definitely led the charge, but it's people like you that step up to lead those organizations and recruit the rest of us to come along and be a part of our neighborhoods that is really what keeps this alive. So, anybody who hasn't started a neighborhood association yet, you've got three great resources right here to be able to talk about how to do that and what that could really look like. And I hope you'll consider it, because I think it'd be great for the entire city to be completely covered by neighborhood associations. I think it really just gets everybody buying into all of this. So, thank you so much for the work that you do, and thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the City of Dubuque has fostered a culture that encourages residents to establish neighborhood associations, fostering a sense of neighborhood pride with homeowners, landlords, and tenants taking responsibility for appearance and safety. And whereas neighborhood associations are organized and led by residents who volunteer their time, talent, and treasure to make Dubuque a better place to live, work, and play. And whereas neighborhood associations represent a collective and dedicated resident, a collective of dedicated residents living in close proximity who share a desire to create a neighborhood identity and encouraging engagement among neighbors and those dedicated to their neighborhood. And whereas the establishment of neighborhood associations provides a remarkable avenue for residents to connect with one another, leverage city grant funding and resources to enhance neighborhood amenities, and serve as advocates for the well-being of their neighborhood. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of all neighborhood associations to the betterment of our neighborhood and overall community. Come on up. Temwah's got a picture for us. Here we go. Thanks, guys.
Our fifth proclamation is Public Service Recognition Week.
All right. Jenny Messrich is here with us, I believe.
I have no words.
You have a few words, Jenny. Come on. You have a few things to say. Tell us at least about what we're going to do later this week. We'd appreciate knowing that.
My name is Jenny Messrich. I am the employee appreciation committee chair, and we are having our annual employee breakfast this Thursday, just to celebrate all of our employees.
Yeah. And thank you for saying that. You know, we really appreciate that we get an opportunity to do that. I think one of the things that we need to recognize in when you live in the City of Dubuque is you are served by dedicated public servants that work in every single department in this city, and we appreciate that we get a chance to celebrate those servants and celebrate with you, once a year at least. So, thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas Americans, including the nearly 60,000 residents of Dubuque, are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels. These unsung heroes do the work that keeps our community and nation working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths to serve their communities. And whereas many public servants, including police officers, healthcare professionals, code enforcement officials, and others, risk their lives each day in service to their communities. And whereas day in and day out, all city staff provide diverse services to create a more viable, livable, equitable, and resilient community. And whereas public service employees in Dubuque are composed of many individuals respected for their ability, professionalism, and commitment to doing the best job possible. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as Public Service Recognition Week.
Our sixth proclamation is National Nurses Week.
All right. I believe Bob Wethel is here with us today.
Hi, Bob Wethel, Chief Nursing Officer at Mercy One here in Dubuque. Just like to thank you all for taking a few minutes to recognize nurses during this National Nurses Week. I think when you think about careers or positions, jobs, nobody thinks about how a nurse really affects every person that they come into contact with every single day they work. I think every one of us can think of that one nurse at one time that made a difference in their lives. So for nurses that work 24/7, 365 days a year, we're never closed. It's nice to have this time and take time to thank a nurse this week. So Brad, I think you definitely need to, and Katie, you probably should also. So again, just thank you for taking the time tonight, and for everyone out there, just think of a nurse this week and thank them for the job they do.
Well, thank you, Bob. Yeah, and absolutely, thanks for sharing that message, but also for being here to accept this proclamation and putting this proclamation forward so that we do recognize the work that nurses do every single day. I'll be sure to take note and thank a nurse when I get home tonight. So, thank you very much. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the City of Dubuque proudly recognizes and celebrates the extraordinary contributions of nurses who provide skilled, compassionate, and dedicated care every day to individuals and families in our community. And whereas the nurses of Mercy One Dubuque Medical Center have long been recognized as leaders in healthcare, offering exceptional care in cancer treatment, cardiology, and robotic surgery, and serving as a beacon of healing, innovation, and hope. And whereas Mercy One Dubuque's nursing excellence is further underscored by the prestigious Magnet Recognition, an honor earned five times, placing them among an elite group of hospitals nationwide and demonstrating their commitment to nursing excellence, high-quality patient outcomes, and professional practice. And whereas nurses are at the heart of our healthcare system, often the first and last line of care, and play a critical role in improving patient safety, health education, preventative care, and overall community well-being. And whereas the people of Dubuque deeply value and appreciate the selfless service, resilience, and humanity shown by nurses, especially in times of challenge and uncertainty. And whereas during National Nurses Week, we honor and thank all nurses, and especially those at Mercy One Dubuque, for their leadership, innovation, and unwavering dedication to improving the lives of every patient they serve. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through 12th, 2025, as National Nurses Week in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate the vital contributions of nurses to the health and well-being of our community.
Our seventh proclamation is Kids to Parks Day.
All right. Jared McGovern is here. Everybody get ready for energy.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jared McGovern. I also have some amazing humans here who are also representing Dubuque nature everywhere.
Nope, it's your turn.
Okay. So, looks like that's going to be me. All right. So I'm joined here with Colleen McCann, who's our Dubuque Nature Everywhere Coordinator, with Danielle Willis, who's the Director of Early Childhood with St. Mark Youth and Richmond, and of course, Marie Ware, the Director of Dubuque Parks and Recreation. Before we dig into the Nature Everywhere Initiative and Kids to Park Day, I want to take this opportunity to thank all of those who manage public lands and areas where people have access to green space, whether those be our city teams, our county teams, the Dubuque County Conservation Board, and O'Brien sitting behind me, the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, and our federal partners, specifically the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Army Corps of Engineers that jointly manage the Upper Mississippi River Wildlife, or Fish and Wildlife Refuge right here in Dubuque. All amazing public spaces that we have access to that are our lands. So, thank you to all of those. I represent up here today a leadership cohort, Dubuque Nature Everywhere. We are a cohort with leadership members Danielle, Marie, Lisa Feltes with the Dubuque Community School District, as well as Dee Althoff with Hills and Dales. And what we have brought to Dubuque is an initiative in which we are working to connect all young children to nature every day. The Nature Everywhere Communities, in which all of you supported, and I very much thank you for that letter of support because we were chosen, one of 70-plus communities in the country, only two in the state of Iowa, that are building out nature connection strategies or school, green schoolyard strategies. So, what we are working on currently, we're going to be diving into some public engagement initiatives to try to touch base with as many sectors as we possibly can who may connect with the outdoors and the work that they do, citizens in this community. And we're going to begin doing that coming up here in May. We're already collecting information. If you want to fill out our survey and be part of this movement, please head to dbqnatureeverywhere.org. And that includes everybody else in the virtual space and all of you watching this on Facebook like I do, please log in. Now with that, Dubuque Nature Everywhere, our mission is to connect all young children ages zero to six with nature every single day by inspiring community movement to foster awareness and buy-in, empowering households, caregivers, and educators with tools, training, continuing education resources, and collaboratively bridging gaps in equitable access while focusing on nature space improvements that support community climate resilience. And again, I want to thank all of you as leaders in the city of Dubuque and the work that you've done around sustainability, climate resiliency, as well as connecting people through trails and investments in parks such as things in the Bee Branch Greenway, the work at Eagle Point Park, Four Mounds, and of course, Comiskey Park. So, thank you all for that. Our vision is to inspire meaningful nature connections for all young children to be happy, healthy, and hopeful. So with that, thank you so much. We are accepting that proclamation, Kids to Parks Day, May 17. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, Jared, everyone, thank you so much for the work that you're doing, for your leadership, and your just unending passion for this issue. I mean, it really is. In all seriousness, we so appreciate it. We so appreciate all the energy that everybody brings, yeah, everybody brings to this. As a person who loves parks and used trails just yesterday, it is a wonderful place to be. And it's because we have dedicated people like you that are making sure that that happens. So, thank you. And thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque proclamation. Whereas, May 17th, 2025, is the 14th Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day encourages children and families to play outdoors. Playing with nature in our parks fosters relationships among children, positive self-esteem, encourages teamwork, and supports autonomy. Children engaged in nature play show improved attention, healthier habits, better problem-solving skills, and greater creativity. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Cavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 17th of May, 2025, as Kids to Parks Day in the city of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge residents to make time on May 17th to take the children in their household to a neighborhood, county, state, or national park. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, all.
Our final proclamation is Public Works Week.
And Ariel Swift is back with us. Been so long since we've seen you, Ariel.
Not quite that tall. I'm Ariel Swift, Public Works Director. I'm very honored to accept this each year on behalf of not only my department and the individuals that work within, but also those in Parks and Rec, Water Resource and Recovery, Engineering, Transportation, basically half of our departments in the city. All go in and they all volunteer to work for this organization and give back to their communities and be those public servants as we heard earlier tonight. So, I'm very honored to accept this on behalf of them. Thank you.
Ariel, thank you for mentioning everyone and pointing out the fact that there are so many people that belong in Public Works Week. So, thank you for your service and the service of everybody in your department and all departments in the city. City of Dubuque proclamation. Whereas, the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, has been designated as National Public Works Week by the American Public Works Association with the theme "People, Purpose, Presence," to highlight three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve in their communities and their dedication to the public health and safety, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Dubuque via public works professionals' focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services. And whereas, these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children of the city of Dubuque to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, we recognize that the services provided by the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, and that the efficiency of personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Cavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Public Works Week.
Well, we will now move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. And consent items can be found on pages two through five of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Cavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next are items set for public hearing. We have two. First is fiscal year 2025 First Budget Amendment for May 19th, 2025. And second is setting a public hearing for the adoption of the Public Housing Authority Annual Plan for Federal Fiscal Year 2025 for July 7th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Wethel.
And a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Cavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Next are public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is 2025 Repair and Preventative Maintenance of the Iowa Street Parking Garage Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
And a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Cory, please.
Project Manager Jim Bosley and Director of Transportation Services Ryan Necky are recommending city council approve the plan specifications form of contract and estimated cost of $4,011,300 for the 2025 repair and maintenance of the Iowa Street Parking Garage through the adoption of the attached ordinance, resolution, forgive me. In 2022, the city issued a request for proposals for a parking ramp maintenance needs assessment. In November of 2022, the city council approved awarding the contract to Desmond, Inc. of Chicago, Illinois. The Iowa Street Ramp Condition Assessment Report completed by Desmond indicated several areas in the Iowa Street Parking Ramp that need repairs and maintenance work. A professional services contract was signed with Desmond to provide design and construction administration services for structural repairs. The 2025 repair and maintenance of the Iowa Street Parking Garage will provide for slab-on-grade asphalt and concrete repairs, full-depth panjoy slab repairs, partial-depth concrete repairs on garage ramps, concrete curb island removal and replacement, form-and-pore joist repairs, form-and-pore beam repairs, column repairs, waterproofing repair and enhancements, new waterproofing membrane, stair tower repairs, installation of new supplemental floor drains on roof level, electrical upgrades including circuit, conduit, and feeders, lighting fixtures, plumbing upgrades including waste drains, piping, hose bibs, replacement of elevator pit pump, and other miscellaneous work. As part of the project, the bid documents will include alternate bid items. Based on the current estimate, there will be sufficient funds to proceed with the alternate options. However, staff believe it is in the city's best interest to receive bids that will be evaluated for potential consideration. Based on the bids received, if the city elects not to select any alternatives, the base bid will be used as the basis for the recommended award of this project. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. We are on a public hearing to consider city council approve the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2025 repair and maintenance of the Iowa Street Parking Garage. Do we have anyone here in chambers to comment on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
Nope.
Nope.
Thank you both. All right, back to us then for discussion. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions. How old is that parking ramp? And do we have any idea how long these repairs will last for?
Ryan, you're taking the long way.
It's good to remember as you go, yeah.
Ryan Necky, Director of Transportation Services. That ramp is a 1964 or 1968 ramp. I believe Locust Street 64. And as far as how long will these repairs hold? The overall goal we're going for is 10 to 15 years on what these are going to be. But again, that's how much usage the ramp gets and the preventive maintenance and how well the membrane holds up.
And I guess one follow-up. Do we know what's the estimated life remaining on the ramp? Because this is, this is a lot of concrete work and concrete fails, of course, as it ages. So, just didn't know if we have like, if we know that this is, okay, this is going to buy us 10 to 15 years in 15 years. Are we talking about replacing this or what?
So, replacement is not on the table at the current time. If you've noticed, the majority of the repairs are all third level. And the Iowa Street Ramp, when it was built in the 60s, is a flat roof ramp, as in all the water sits on that ramp and does not flow off. The Locust Street Ramp was built pretty much the same time, but it was built with a pitch on it. So, in the wintertime, when we get rain and salt and everything works in, the corrosion through the, and granted, I'm not a structural engineer, but the corrosion through the rebar is the main issue on the third level there. That was all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sprank. Others? No other questions, discussion?
Well, just real quickly, since you, since you talked about it, are they going to put a pitch to the roof then in the repairs?
That was an option that we looked at, but the overall cost for that would have been astronomical. So, what we're going to do is we're going to put a new membrane on it, which that hadn't been replaced in minimum probably 10, 15 years. So, what we're going to do is we're going to go through and do all the repairs, and then the contractor will go through and put a new membrane coating on it to seal the ramp back down.
So, there'll be special attention to keeping that in good shape?
Correct. There'll be special, there'll be a maintenance plan built on that. There'll be special snow plows used on that to make sure it lasts as long as we can.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, Ryan, thanks. I don't have any further questions for you, but I do think, you know, there's, the issue of parking ramps in downtown Dubuque has been an interesting one. And there's been sort of ebbs and flows with demand on parking ramps over the years, changes in the way people move around downtown. I mean, I remember growing up in the days when we had just pedestrians in Town Clock Plaza. We didn't have a road that was running through there, you know? And I think it, one of the things that is, has come to light in fixing this ramp is the fact that we have a future in this part of town now, all of a sudden, that we didn't necessarily have five to 10 years ago. And that's an exciting thing. So, I think that making this investment in this ramp makes total sense in the course of making sure that we have the space that people need in that area. As I keep saying, as often as I can, as soon as our cars can fly, we won't need these things anymore in the same way. But apparently, that's still going to be a while. So, in the meantime, I think it's important that we make sure that we have plenty of space for people to, to make sure that they have a place to park and be able to move around downtown and have the capacity for people to continue to move downtown and be downtown for things like the new medical school that's coming, businesses that will certainly follow, and all the other things that are going to be much more exciting and vibrant down there. So, appreciate your information today and appreciate the work that's being done on this. I think it's a good investment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. So, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Cavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number two is Resolution Approving a Development Agreement with Fitzgerald Enterprises LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolutions.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Cory, please.
Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving the development agreement with Fitzgerald Enterprises LLC, including the issuance of Urban Renewal Tax Increment Revenue Grant Obligations, or TIF. Key elements of the development agreement are as follows. One, developer to make a capital investment of approximately $500,000 to create three new residential rental units and rehabilitate the commercial space to support a food service industry tenant. Two, city to award a downtown housing creation grant in an amount not to exceed $30,000, 10,000 per unit up to three units. And three, city to award a 15-year tax increment financing incentive in the form of semi-annual rebates. The tax increment financing incentive is estimated to not exceed $150,000. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt the attached resolution approving the development agreement with Fitzgerald Enterprises LLC, including the issuance of Urban Renewal Tax Increment Revenue Grant Obligations, or TIF. Do we have any public input on this item? Seeing none here, anything virtually?
No.
No input.
Thank you both. All right, back to us for any discussion. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm all in support of this. Mr. Fitzgerald's taking a building in my neighborhood that is, that was in dire need of attention, and he's doing some phenomenal work with it. He's done some great work as well. A former contractor who's worked with him on different projects, he's above and beyond bar. So, I'm very happy that this is, hopefully, we all get approved on this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Ms. Wethel.
I just want to thank our economic development team. We had talked as a council early on during our housing discussions about how do we look at our current legislation and appropriately discuss short-term rentals? We are not incentivizing products and residences that will be turned over to Airbnb's. And I think that's really important for our residents because we, our whole goal is to create housing, not to create Airbnbs. And nothing against Airbnb's, but they shouldn't be subsidized and won't be in the next 15 years according to this contract. So, kudos to our economic development team for the work they've done on this contract.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. All right. And I'll just say, you know, I think this is a great example of the fact that when we're working on developments, especially in the downtown area, but really all over Dubuque, we're not just talking about big developments. We're talking about all kinds of developers of all sizes. And I agree, I'm thankful that Mr. Fitzgerald is taking this project on and that we're able to work with him to be able to do this because it's important that, even if it is just one building at a time sometimes for some developers, I think it's important that we get this opportunity and that the city stands behind that. So, I'm thankful that we're able to move this forward, hopefully, and I'm looking forward to voting for it. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. So, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Cavanaugh.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
At motion, passes seven zero.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
All right, thank you, Adrian. We will accept any public input now. Appreciate hearing from anybody who has any. Seeing no public input here. Anything virtually?
No.
Okay.
No input.
All right, nothing virtually. Last call before we move on to action items. Okay, we can move on. Adrian, thank you.
Action item number one is Private Lead Service Line Replacement Pilot Program, Phase One Award Construction Contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolutions.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Farber. Cory, please.
Water Department Director Christopher Lester is recommending city council award of the Private Lead Service Line Replacement Pilot Program Phase One Construction to JQ Construction LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $1,973,660, which is 13.91% higher than the engineer's estimate of $1,732,600. The scope of work in the first phase includes the replacement of 196 lead service lines identified throughout the city's water distribution service area. The nature of the replacements will vary by site, ranging from full replacements, public water main to interior plumbing, to partial replacements, a portion of the service line between the public water main and the interior plumbing. Work will be conducted within the city's right-of-way and on private properties with authorization from private property owners. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. Any discussion? Mr. Sprank.
Yeah. Just appreciative that we were able to get this program, that we're going to make this, that hopefully this is very successful. I know a number of my neighbors are definitely, I helped them sign up for this because they know they had a problem in their homes. And as we learned at budget time, when water was in here that night, that sooner or later, the city is going to be responsible for replacing potentially a lot more of these. So this will probably be as much as a pilot program, but a test as to actually how much this is truly going to cost us as the city to look at doing this in the future, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Chris, I'm going to have a question for you, if you wouldn't mind. Anybody else have anything else? My question, Chris, is about the bid estimate. So I just was curious because this, the winning bid came in 13.9% higher than the estimate. The estimate was at $1.7 million. All the other bids were quite a bit, I mean substantially higher. I was just curious what the, if you have any sense of what the reason was that our estimate was quite a bit lower than what ended up coming in here for bids?
Hi, Chris Lester, Water Department Director. So we don't have a, probably a real good grasp on why it was, why the low bid was still significantly higher than the engineer's estimate. This is the first in the state of Iowa, the program that we're doing this. So I think we kind of, we took our best estimated guess to what this was going to cost for the first 200. So there's a lot of municipalities, a lot of small towns that were calling us and calling Origin Design the second that the bid, that the bids were received because kind of nobody had any idea what this was going to cost in Iowa, being it was the first time that we're doing this in the state of Iowa. So it's a little bit higher than we wanted to be. But as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the, the high bid was close to 3.4 million. So even though we're 13.91% over, we're still, you know, somewhat close to our mark, so.
Yeah. You actually answered my question pretty well, I think. I mean, the fact that we are the first, and we have to kind of set the bar for everybody else. So that makes sense that we, we did our best to guess it. And this is a unique situation, too. We don't often go replacing lead lines in bulk like this. I mean, this is something that's brand new. So I can totally understand why the bid is higher. I just, I think that explains it a little bit more for me, so thank you for that.
Yeah, of course.
Appreciate that. Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
File-up question, Chris. So with the contract, that being said, does, was there any, in the, any clauses about deadline? Because I know we had a pretty tight deadline to get this happen. Is there any issues if they're late that they have to pay back anything or not?
For the, for the construction piece?
Yes, yeah.
So we're requiring that this Phase One is done by December of this year. And then obviously Phases Two and Three, which we're in the process of getting the engineering sorted out. This, that'll need to be done by December of 2026, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I'll just add that a civil engineer friend of mine in private practice told me once that engineers' estimates of what projects cost in heaven.
I think it'd be less than that, though. That's what I'm thinking. Okay. Well, Chris, thank you very much for answering those questions. Appreciate you being here. All right, motion here is to receive and file, adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
At motion, passes seven zero.
Action item number two is Proposed Ordinance Prohibiting the Feeding and Harassment of Bears.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file the communications and further move that a requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Russell. Cory, please.
Chief of Police Jeremy Jensen and Public Health Director Mary Rose Corgan are recommending city council adopt an ordinance prohibiting the intentional feeding and harassment of bears within the city limits of Dubuque. The increasing sightings and presence of bears in residential and public areas in Dubuque has raised serious concerns regarding public safety, wildlife health, and property damage. Incidents involving the feeding and harassment of bears have become more frequent, contributing to potential aggressive behaviors by the bears and dependency on human-provided food sources. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. Yeah, Ms. Russell.
I was glad that, to read that the ordinance was based on research with other communities that are more experienced with active bears in their community. And I think that's a great place to start. Since this is somewhat new for us, there's other places that have a lot of experience, and I'm glad that we tapped into that in developing our ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. Is there a bear expert here tonight to talk about the, what bears do?
Public Health Director Mary Rose Corrigan, I am not the expert. But we do have Brian Preston here from the County Conversation, Conservation, and Ross Ellingson from the Iowa DNR Wildlife Bureau. If you have questions?
Absolutely. So if they could come up and talk about bears, because our citizens are alarmed by seeing bears. And, you know, we're not going to try to, you know, feed bears, which attracts bears. But if I were to see a bear, it'd be better to see a bear rather than seeing a hungry bear. You know what I'm saying? So when I see a bear, my first concern is not, I hope the bear's okay, right? I hope that I'm okay. So we're trying to eliminate bears from the city, right? Or reduce the number of bears that come to the city. And yet, and we have like one bear made a big splash, and now there are more bears. Could you talk about that a little bit?
My name is Ross Ellingson. I'm a wildlife depredation biologist for the State of Iowa DNR. So to answer your question, the bear that is most frequently visiting the city is now one that we're calling a resident bear. He's been here, to the best of our knowledge, since about 2020. And I think this ordinance is all about reducing opportunity for the bear. Every time that there is somebody putting food out or intentionally feeding the bear, it's hard, the bear gets used to the food source, and it's harder and harder to make the bear leave the city. So anything that we can do through the ordinance to help reduce opportunity for the bear is definitely going to play in for, for the public safety concern that we have that goes with it. Brian?
Yeah, so I'm Brian Preston, Director of the Dubuque County Conservation Department. And I've been involved with a lot of the bear sightings in Dubuque. You know, early on, when this bear started coming to town, we had some residents that were intentionally feeding the bear, putting out food, peanut butter, lots of bird seed, corn, things that bears like to eat. They're very, they're like me, they're very food motivated. So they remember those locations where they got a good meal, and they're likely to come back to them. So, you know, the old saying is a fed bear is a dead bear. I think it's really exciting that we have black bears coming back to Iowa. It's been about 150 years since we've had black bears in Iowa. So it's very exciting, but at the same time, we need to keep wildlife wild. We don't want them being imprinted on, you know, associating people with food. And so I think this is a great ordinance to encourage people not to do this and, and to give the bear space.
In all the reading I've been doing, it seems like we're very torn. We're glad to see bears, but not right next to us, right in the city, right? So, so could you tell me, my first question was, are we seeing an increasing number of bears in the community, in the area?
Yes, we're seeing an increase in the number of bears in eastern Iowa, northeastern Iowa, based on populations that are in our neighboring states. So to the best of our knowledge, right now, we may have four bears in northeast Iowa. And we can only imagine that in future years, that will probably just be on the, on the rise.
Great, and I, and I like you, like the, like the ordinance as a first step. But just talking about intentionally feeding bears, how about unintentionally feed bears? I'm looking at this, the city in Connecticut who's saying they don't allow unintentional feeding of bears either. So they are not allowing any bird feeders from March through November. They're doing things like that, and they're getting pretty strong about that. I mean, and then something that was in here is that someone was asked to volunteer and voluntarily put away things in their, in their yard. And you're saying that now it's not going to, if someone, and they refused. Does this ordinance change that? So when someone asks them to put the birds feeder away, that they need to do that?
I'm going to take that if that's all right.
Thank you.
So unintentionally feeding bears could be covered by Section 2 of the ordinance, 2B, where we talk about prohibitions, because it has negligently or otherwise making any food of any kind available to bears. So it's rather broad there. There would be some discretion there as to was it, was it negligent or not? And we would evaluate that on a case-by-case basis. When we get down to Section 3 on the removal of the food sources upon request, does give us the option to, if we know that the bear is isolated to a particular area, to ask people to remove attractants like bird feeders or things of that nature temporarily. It's for, I believe, no less than 10 days in the hopes that the lack of any sort of attractant or food source is enough to get the bear on its way. And it is mandatory per the ordinance, and it could result in enforcement action. We certainly hope that it, that it would not. But it could be that we would have to issue a civil citation for noncompliance.
So you would ask them first to remove it?
Absolutely.
Before giving that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the reason is that we had a bear right behind my place. And I'm in the city. I'm in, surrounded by city and homes and all this other, so. And my neighbors were upset when they see, go out and see a bear. And the bear was upset, too, to see them. But, and I understand. And I, could you, are there other species of bears in the area? Or is it just black bears?
Black bears.
Okay.
Because of the populations we have in neighboring states, and they're just expanding their range and just natural movement of bears, we are seeing more frequent events, so.
And they say black bears rarely attack humans. But there are other species, I mean, they also said black bears are not necessarily black. There's a lot of different colors.
There are different color phases of, of the black bear, correct?
So they're all black bears around here?
The last year, when a bear came through the city of Dubuque, it was a brown-faced bear, or some people called it cinnamon. That bear was somewhat trapped in the city because of all the harassment that took place. And what we were emphasizing to the public was just to give the bear plenty of space and give the bear the opportunity to leave the city limits. And that's exactly what, what we thought the bear would do based on its prior path. So then we also have the, the resident bear that lives most of the time north of the city. But this time of the year, when they become more active and they're, they're coming out of hibernation looking for food, the resident bear has just figured out that there's so many easy food sources that, you know, he's just thinking about his diet. And hoping, we're working together with the city, the county. And this is somewhat new also to the Department of Natural Resources to have more frequent bear events. So we are working together to make people more aware of what they can do to prevent the bear doing damage at their home and also to keep them safe. So that's why we're here tonight.
Final question. And part here is in Section 76G2, prohibitions, prohibitions. Number C, this is harass any bear. We're not supposed to harass any bear. Including not limited to approaching any bear by foot, vehicle, or drone or any purpose, including photography. The thing is that I read about the bear is if you see a bear, one time they say, well, you should slowly back away and just go your merry way. The other is if a bear approaches you, you should try to be bigger, be loud, throw stones. And, and that sounds to me like harassment. You're not going to get in trouble if you're, you're doing that type of thing to get, for the bear to move. It says, don't do anything that would change its behavior. But sometimes you want it to leave, right? So it's okay to do, as under this ordinance, is to yell and throw stones and say, get out of here, bear?
So I think the answer to that is if someone, for example, is in a, in a park or something like that, just minding their own business and a bear approaches them, we're not going to have a problem with actions taken to deter the bear or for public safety. The issue with this that we have run into in prior years is that people were kind of doing bear tracker or bear watch of their own and following the, the bear and kind of doing play-by-play. And then other people were getting in on it. And, and the goal is to deter that kind of behavior because it starts to, you're going to have to correct me with terminology here, but it's almost like the bear starts to get like boxed in or feel threatened. And then it modifies its behavior, which might make it aggressive. Whereas if it accidentally came across someone and someone acted to deter the bear, it would be one and done. The bear would go away. Whereas with these ongoing actions, it, it, there's more likely to be an interaction that goes south.
Well, thank you very much for the good information for the citizens. They, and did you have something else that you, okay. So, and I appreciate that because, I mean, our citizens, I think, are, have the same two hats on. We love to see nature and we love to see, oh, that's curious. But, but then of course, you know, there are also that ambiguity about what the bear are gonna do, you know, especially when I accidentally surprised the bear. You know, I walk out the door and there's a bear. You don't know exactly what, you know, that's very startling. So I think this is a good start. I just hope that we have, we keep track about numbers of bears and that, you know, I don't know what your number is, say, well, if we get past this number of bears around, we need to do something different to, you know, to, and change this in any way. But I appreciate the, the tracking, the good information, and this, a good start to protect our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farmer.
Speaking of tracking, could you share with us what the natural habitat would be for these bears in this part of the country? You said that they're hibernating right now or coming out of hibernation. Where exactly do they burrow in? What areas is?
So the topography in eastern Iowa lends itself to lots of cavities. We have sinkholes and those types of places make great places for bears to hibernate. And we have nutrient-rich soil, so lots of good food available too. And crops come up. We all know how much raccoons likes, like corn. You know, bears can feed on corn as well, but berries and they're foragers. So we have lots of food available, but it's just gonna take a little bit of time. Right now, we don't have as many berries available. So I think the bear has just figured out to come into the city and grab those easy food sources. So when there's more food available on the landscape, we think the bear will leave the city and go back. And it's kind of been its pattern over the years to just come into the city during the late part of April, early part of May, and then it will go back out of the city later on.
So it's bunkers, if you will, the bunkers that they live in, in the wintertime are really burrowed in, in different parts around here. And hopefully we can encourage them by not feeding. Is that kind of what you're indicating? To kind of keep their space and to enjoy the nature that's around them for their nourishment?
Very much encouraged, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
Thanks for being here, all three of you. Nothing against you, Mary Rose, but I'm not sure that, yeah, we could have this conversation as robustly without you here. So thank you. I thought that I was doing a great job by just putting a two-foot fence around my beans this year. So the fact that we're having this conversation brings a whole other level to even how we navigate our own property. So my biggest question, I think, is, as you had said, there were four bears that we know of in northeastern Iowa. Do we know, are they male or female?
We don't know for sure if they're male or female, but we can just, we suspect that they're young males.
Okay.
That are venturing out in search of a female and they expand the range naturally. It's common for young males to venture out, to find their new territory, if you will, and, and find a mate. So we think that they're male, but we don't know for sure.
So there's no cubs that have been witnessed in northeastern Iowa?
So far, we have not documented cubs. We have had reports, but we, we're looking for, you know, video or trail cam photos or anything like that so that we can say for sure. But at this time, we just haven't gotten that, those documented things that we need for proof.
My understanding is that, yes, we don't want hungry bear, but we definitely don't want hungry mama bears with cubs especially. And so is there a way that people can track this? I don't know. Is our county website going to carry anything? I'm just curious about how, as a city, we can direct our citizens to learn more if they have a sighting or hear about a sighting to get factual information.
That's a great question. I'll let Mary Rose speak to it first and then if, I'll add to it.
Yeah. We're, we're gonna be coming out with some educational materials that our PIO office is developing along with what the DNR has. So we'll, we'll direct people to report those to either the police department, who's gonna be the main enforcer educator or our department. And then we in turn let DNR know about those sightings.
So from a department standpoint as well, and outside of city limits, we encourage people to call and report and let us know the locations of bears. Cause we, right now, assume there's roughly four bears. We had a report by Macocata. We had a report on Heritage Trail, but also in Dubuque County. And the resident bear that's in city limits off of Roosevelt. So we encourage people to contact us and let us know if and when they had an encounter. Go ahead, Brian.
I just want to add, they can certainly call our office. We have a, a running list of sightings and, and they're transferring that data to the DNR to help keep track of that. We are in a very unique geological location. So we have the city of Dubuque out in the point, along the Mississippi River. A lot of, we know a lot of wildlife migrates down the Mississippi River. When they get to a large metro area like Dubuque, they get stuck because it's really confusing for a bear to get around or through this area. So I think this is a great ordinance and kind of a, something that can be modeled in other communities for how to deal with bears in their communities in, in the future as well, too.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, humans just aren't good at big dangerous animals. Been to, been around bison and seen people stop their cars and get out to go, go get a picture with a nice buffalo and hold their baby up next to it. And National Park see dozens of people flipped and a few killed every year from getting too close to these large, dangerous, wild animals. And we don't want anybody to get hurt or killed by a bear in Dubuque. Yet they were kind of here first. They've got a, got a right to be around. They've got some legal protections. So this is a, the object of the game here is to, to live and let live and stay away from the bears. Pretty simple. The, the things that went on last year on social media, a couple of years ago where people were literally chasing this bear all over town, is kind of asking for trouble. It's kind of like going to get your picture taken with the three-ton buffalo and see how that goes. So I think we've got a good ordinance here. People just have to regain their common sense around wild animals and around wildlife in general. One of the more profound, surprising EMS calls I was on 30, 40 years ago was about three o'clock in the morning, a drunk lady found a beaver walking down Central Avenue and thought she'd pick it up. I'll tell you what, a beaver can raise hell with a human body when they're, when you're holding it. That was just, you know, 30 pounds of beaver that chopped this woman up pretty good. A bear in the distance is better than a bear, bear in your backyard. And we're asking people to take some reasonable measures to not have the bear in your backyard. Pretty simple stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Well, I don't know about anybody else, but this one wasn't on my city council bingo card. This is a, this is kind of a surreal conversation, honestly. I'm looking at Krena's face as she's talking about how this ordinance works. And so in all that, I think this is a great conversation. And, you know, it's, in, in some ways, it's a, it's, it's such a, it's a basic first knowledge conversation in a lot of ways, because this is so brand new to us in so many ways. So I appreciate that we're blazing a trail on that. Krena, seriously, good work. We appreciate you working on this and the police department as well, bringing this forward, because it was problematic last year when we had the bear that was here and we didn't, we didn't act appropriately as, as a community in that case. And I think we need to learn how to do this. A lot of other places in the United States and in the world have learned how to do this. Some of our nearest neighbors have learned how to do this. And Ross, I appreciate you saying too, the, the DNR is learning how to do this. Dubuque County Conservation is learning altogether. So this, this does seem to me like a good start. And, and it does seem like a, a good place to begin the, the larger conversation, community-wide and statewide. I appreciate that we're working on some educational materials for everybody. Appreciate the, the message that if we do see a bear, reach out. It can be in the city of Dubuque, reach out to police, Dubuque County Conservation. Obviously, the Iowa DNR wants to know about that too, but we all communicate with each other on those things. So this is, this is a, a great thing to, to see here. I, I'm glad we're doing this. It is a little bit weird that, that we're sitting in this pot. But I'm also, I agree with you, Brian. I'm, I'm excited that in some ways, conservation is working to the point where we're starting to see black bear population increase in northeast Iowa. That's actually, that's a cool thing. I mean, that's good that that's happening. But it is something that we now need to learn to live with. It's good to be able to have more wildlife and, and have a, you know, better natural atmosphere here. But it is something that we need to make sure that we're treating responsibly. So thank you. I'm glad you're here tonight. This was very helpful. And Mary Rose, thank you very much for, for being a part of this too. All right. Okay. I don't think we have any further discussion. Appreciated that one. So the motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Have a final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Rousell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Next, our council member reports.
Well, I know we were all at budget hearings together fairly often, but did we have any other time to do anything else? Yeah, Ms. Rousell.
Well, I'm, I'm wearing my green to celebrate spring and of course, trees. And we've been planting at the Arboretum, at Bunker Hill Golf Course, and at Fire Station Number Two. And that was great fun. We also had a wonderful Arbor Day celebration. And I'd like to thank Mayor Protam at that time, Susan Farber, City Clerk Adrian Brightfelder, and Jared McGovern from Wanderwood for coming out and reading tree stories to the kids. So, thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Rousell. Ms. Farber.
Yeah, so we talked tonight about mental health. And I wanted to give a shout out to NAMI and also to the VNA, who held fundraisers over the last week in support of all the wonderful work that they are doing for the city and for the residents and for the reach out. And it was just really, really special to see that the support within the community was, was really great. And they had such success in both of these establishments and for their fundraisers. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sprank.
Thank you. Of course, last week, we had our lovely budget hearing, which we approved all that stuff. And then Friday, thanks to Mr. Jones's efforts and a bunch of folks, there was a wonderful first responders event that I know a bunch of us here were there. Saturday was, of course, the grand, the opening of Farmer's Market, which was just packed. And I was down there at like 9:30 to 10:30. And I was, it's always impressive. So that was a wonderful day, wonderful morning. And then, of course, tonight we are here. For, then I've got two neighborhood association meetings, looking forward to the Millwork, Millwork Night Market opening. And then, of course, Thursday, I'll be at the employee recognition. And, and the DMATS have a meeting as well that will be, that some of us will be at. And then Saturday, I've got the labor harvest. Dubuque Main Street's doing that wonderful architectural day. So I'll be at my church talking with folks about that. I feel like there's something else, but I think that's pretty much it for me. So, so when folks always ask me, whoa, what you doing? I got a bunch of stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Ms. Wethel.
I would like to thank Mayor Kavanaugh and his family, my family, and a variety of families. Did the Fennlin Hill Neighborhood Association clean up this weekend. And we had a lot of kids doing their part and demonstrating to their community what it's like to participate. And it was, it was great to see. So hats off to the Office of Shared Prosperity and Neighborhood Support for the Graspers in Yellow Vest. That was a fun part of it. On a more serious note, we had a, a community organization, Forever Seventeen Foundation, meet with high schools this week. My own children were part of that. And to talk about the accident that took the lives of some area high schoolers. So the Forever Seventeen Foundation was established in the memory of Kennedy Els Camp and Chloe Lucas, who were tragically killed in a, a car crash. And, and so to talk to high schoolers about safety, what it is like to say you want to get out of a car, and an important message the week of prom. On a more happy note, our riverfront was filled with some really excited kids. Hempstead and Wallard, I know, had their proms this weekend. And our riverwalk is great to walk alone in the mornings, but man is it fun when it's filled with a bunch of high schoolers and families. So kudos to all of our staff who had the riverfront looking beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Not, not a crazy busy week. We had a DRA meeting Wednesday, the 22nd. Thursday, the 24th, I was at the Local Emergency Planning Commission meeting out at Emergency Management. And that's the entity that's comprised of emergency responders and businesses that operate with hazardous chemicals and things. And just pre-planning and, and training and funding training to make sure that our, that our Dubuque Fire Hazard Materials Response Team, which also covers all of Dubuque County and out of the region a little bit under 2080 agreements, is capable, well-trained and well-aware of what's in the industries and, and businesses in Dubuque. So that was, everything's in pretty good track there. That's a very routine meeting. And I can't tell you what a good thing that is, because it's important that that be a very routine meeting. Friday, Mr. Mayor, you had some really good remarks at the Workers Memorial Day out at the Labor Temple. It's an annual event honoring people that went to work and didn't come home for whatever reason. And it's a, it's a terribly long list every year, just of the Iowans that didn't make it home and, and a couple of Dubuques unfortunately on that list as well this year. Monday, the 28th, besides passing a budget, which is kind of a good thing that we all did, I was at the ribbon cutting for Roses and Berries, which is a little cafeteria, coffee shop on the west side of Dubuque. And a couple of Syrian immigrants that found their way to Dubuque, you know, just loving it here. And I thought their story was great. I thought their facility was great. And I hear nothing but wonderful things about, about the place. So it was a good one to be at. Friday, the 2nd, my good friend and former colleague Cal Mach retired from the fire department. They, they had a walkout ceremony for him at headquarters. Got to participate in that. I spent a lot of years in the fire department. And some of the most fun I ever had was the time that I spent working with Cal assigned to an ambulance, when we used to cover the whole city and half the county and about three quarters of North America, it seemed like. Wasn't uncommon to run 15 or 20 calls in a 24-hour shift. But we had, we had way too much fun doing it and did a pretty good job of it. Cal had a pretty interesting career. Since, since I left the department, he became an assistant fire chief. And on two occasions, he was chosen by the city manager to fill in as acting chief when the department was in between chiefs. And that's, that's a big load and he, he carried it well. Danny mentioned the Training Center Dinner where we honored some of our own. We fed about 460 people, a pretty fantastic dinner, including four of us and families and friends. That's the major source of operational funding for the center. Remembering that that's used by all the volunteer fire departments in the region, all the law enforcement agencies, including city, state, and county, Dubuque Fire, and others. We have a lot of private meetings in and out of the place all year long. But this is the, the primary source of funds. And we stepped up and, as a city, and paid for the rehabbing of the burners in the, in the fire building this year with others, which is a big investment. But generally, it's there without cost to the taxpayers every day. It's, the cost is assessed instead to the primary beaters. And that's, that's not a bad formula for, for this thing. I was very proud to be there. And have to, have to mention again, Danny Green, the retired fire chief from Cascade, the late Dan Brown, and Dr. John Chapman from Dubuque, and Vicki Leonard from Dubuque, who had the trifecta. She was honored by, she's in, entered into the Police Badge of Honor, Hall of Fame, the Fire Hall of Flame, and the Emergency Medical Services Stars of Life, all three in one night. So Vicki had a pretty good night, and, and of course, she was one of our lead dispatchers at, as a longtime city employee and good friend. So it was a great night. We got to do some great things this week and more coming. Do you want to talk about one other thing coming? Speaking of coming, Alpha Company, the 133rd Infantry Division, based in Dubuque, Iowa, is leaving. They're being deployed. They're going to be in Georgia for a month or two of very intensive training and then headed off to the Middle East for probably a year or so. There's a send-off ceremony for them, May 28th, 2025, at the fairgrounds. The doors open at 5:15. At 5:45 is the ceremony. And at 6:30, the parade will start. And they're looking for law enforcement and fire units to escort their buses out of town as they head off to look out for all of us. So about a thousand of our kids and neighbors and friends are gonna be getting on buses and heading out of town. So it's a big deal. People should be there.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I just wanted to talk about an artistic celebration this past weekend. It was a great collaboration between the Dubuque Symphony Orchestra and Heartland Ballet of Dubuque. They did a complete production of Swan Lake at the Heritage Center at University of Dubuque. It was amazing. William and Trilligator did another great job with the symphony as well as Marina O'Rourke with the ballet company. And so it's featured a local boy too. Now, he's a professional, but his name, Patrick Min. And it was fabulous. You probably saw it as well. And great crowds. And it was just a beautiful performance. And there's so much humanity that you can, and you can learn about humanity so much during these artistic performances. And you could just feel the audience, it's almost a disembodied situation where your body's here, but your mind and your, your eyes are up here following something totally different. And you're seeing what they're going through. And a lot of what they go through is what we all go through during the day. And yet we see it presented artistically. And, and it was top level. So I wanted to congratulate them and let the community know, you know, this is a great place for the arts. And that's no surprise, I hope. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'll close this out and I'll stick with the arts to start with. First of all, I have to say, I, I saw the Dubuque Senior High School Theater Program and their presentation of Peter and the Starcatcher. And very proud of a young man named Sam, who was on stage for the first time, who, who did a wonderful job. So congratulations, Sam, and everybody in that, in that production. It was, it was phenomenal. Really couldn't stop laughing throughout the entire thing. It was great. Also, Julian Dubuque International Film Festival finished up. It was just incredible this year. It was just, as always, so many people, so impressed with Dubuque and the arts. But that festival is, is just top-notch every single year. So I was very glad that we have that here. A couple of things that I was able to go and do, first of all, I've been talking to high school students a lot lately. I went to the IJAG program today at Hempstead. Last week, I was invited by Ms. Benson and her classes at senior to go and talk to them. And then also about some sustainability issues for, it was actually an NICC curriculum class there at senior, talked about sustainability And then also about some sustainability issues for, it was actually an NICC curriculum class there at senior, talked about sustainability here in the city of Dubuque. And then also went and talked to the student government at Dubuque Senior High School. Learned a lot from them as we sat and talked with them. And then went and spoke, well, first of all, I went to the, I had an Iowa League Cities meeting in Des Moines back on the 24th of April, continued to do some work, some good work there with the Iowa League. And then I was invited by the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative last Friday to go to the University of Wisconsin-Madison, just for the, just for an hour-long presentation to talk about some of the sustainability work that Dubuque has done at the, this was the Midwest Climate Summit, it was called. But there was also a question of, you know, Ducks Unlimited is doing some work with Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative, and that's happening a little bit at the DRA right now. So the DRA, they were able to get a DRA grant to look at Chaplain Schmidt Island and some work there to create wetlands and different things that Ducks Unlimited does. MRCTI is trying to do that up and down the entire Mississippi River. So it was an interesting discussion to be able to have and talk about at least the beginning phases of that work. On a final note, I, we continue to talk about the property tax issues at the Iowa Legislature, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows, the legislature has officially passed their 100th day, so the legislators are no longer getting per diem pay as they go to Des Moines. Currently, it is mainly leadership that is there and working through the final budget that is going to be passed, but the property tax issue is still on the table and still being discussed. So we're watching it closely, meeting with our Metro Coalition, the Iowa League of Cities lobbyists as well, to talk about what this issue could continue to mean for cities. I think my biggest concern currently is we may see some legislation that passes without a whole lot of analysis of what that legislation is going to do. We would find out after it passes. That could be concerning, so we continue to watch that and speak to our legislators about it and hope that we can work something out so we at least have a sense of what this means for city budgets, as well as school and county budgets and all those things in the very near years ahead. Okay, all that. We have a closed session for a few more moments, so I'll take a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move the council to go to closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss purchase or sale of real estate.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Russell. For the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Krenner Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Sprank.